To the Cupertino City Council Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 9th. I'm calling the meeting to order. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And our city clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Frueen.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here.
And just to note, Councilmember Chow will be late today.
Yes, Councilmember Chow has emailed us because of work. She will be a little late, and she will come as soon as she came from work. So we are moving to our one action item, which is, "Consider a Report Regarding the Review of Potential Violations of the City of Cupertino Municipal Code and City Policies Regarding Council and Commissioner's Staff Relationships." May I have a stat report, please?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I have a statement I have to make.
I think we'll go into the stat report first.
I'm sorry, I need to recuse, so I need to make a statement. Thank you.
Mayor, it's your discretion as to whether you would like to allow Councilmember Moore to make a statement.
I wanted to make a statement.
Sure, go ahead.
Mayor, I would remind members of the audience that they're out of order.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Moore, you want to make a statement, please?
Thank you. Asking questions is literally my job. In the last two weeks, for instance, I pointed out that the city has been appropriating over $600,000 for extended library hours, which we have not had to pay for since fiscal year 2018 to 19. The current budget has been changed to reflect this information. My questions have also led to the public disclosure and protection of workers at the Valco site from hazardous waste there when we were told the site had a clean bill of health. I also asked why the Audit Committee, which I served on for two years and chaired, was meeting quarterly when we were supposed to review monthly treasurer reports. That led to the ongoing improvement of the financial reporting to the council per the Cupertino Municipal Code and state statutes, which has moved the city towards compliance as reflected in the grand jury report showing me the money. In the past four and a half years, I have served on the Planning Commission and chaired it. I have chaired the Environmental Review Committee for four years, served two years on the Audit Committee and chaired it, chaired the Housing Element Strategic Advisory Committee, and served two years on the VTA Policy Advisory Committee, and was selected to chair it both years by councilmembers across the county. My background is civil engineering, land development, and I've been pursuing my paralegal certificate along with environmental studies to provide good service to the community in my role as a councilmember. It is important that your dedicated councilmembers have access to information and keep in mind that asking questions is literally our job in a free and democratic society. The agenda tonight contemplates referral to the district attorney, which means that I must recuse myself because there is a foreseeable financial impact to myself and my family. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Okay, so we are going to stat report?
Thank you, Mayor Way. So just to advise the public, so there is no requirement that Councilmember Moore recuse herself, at least, you know, not on the advice of this office. She, of course, is, it's up to her as to whether she would like to participate in this process or not. So with that, I will just start with some background, and I have a brief presentation that I'll bring up here. report that was prepared by Linda Dobby at the direction of the City Attorney's Office. So just to review where we are, so on December 19th, the Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury released a report entitled "A House Divided: The Cupertino City Council and City Staff," and the report concerned the conduct of city councilmembers towards city management and staff, among other things. The grand jury made certain findings in that report, which were reviewed by city council, and on February 21st, the city council considered that report and approved a city's response, which is required pursuant to Penal Code Section 933. As part of the city's response, the city council directed the city attorney's office to investigate and report back on violations of the municipal code with respect to council staff and commissioner staff relations. As part of that process, the city attorney's office retained Linda Dobby, who is here today and at the staff table and will be available for questions, to conduct an independent investigation of potential violations of the municipal code and related violations of city policies. The city council was initially provided a confidential attorney-client privileged report regarding this investigation. And I'd just like to pause here to thank everyone, current and former staff, as well as councilmembers who participated in the investigation. It was at times a difficult process, and also, of course, to thank Ms. Dobby for her hard work to get the investigation done in a timely fashion. So that, as I said, that report was initially provided to council as an attorney-client privileged report. On our May 2nd meeting, the city council voted to waive privilege and release the report to the public and to continue the discussion of the matter until the public had the opportunity to review it, and that's why we're here today. The report's findings have been made available for public review and are published with this agenda packet. I won't be discussing the findings in any detail at this meeting, but I'll just note that Ms. Dobby confirmed and, in some areas, expanded on the conclusions of the grand jury. The report also notes that there's, that investigation of other related misconduct is ongoing. Ms. Dobby's report includes seven recommendations to correct the issues identified in the grand jury's findings. And I'll summarize these briefly. They're discussed in more detail in both the staff report and Ms. Dobby's report in your agenda packets. And so the first is, just briefly to avoid, you know, governance by email. Governance should be on the dais and not through email communications. Attempt to prove council staff relations, and if there are concerns that councilmembers have with staff, those should be communicated directly to the city manager and not through other channels. Rely on the advice of executive management staff and other professionals in making decisions. Use the professional staff you have available here to do your research and help make informed decisions. Continue to use the city work program to identify goals and staffing needs. I think this is one area where we're definitely making improvements. And then the report also recommends to develop a new ethics policy based on the 2018 Ethics Code adopted by council. And then the city attorney and city clerk should consider providing councilmember training on Rosenberg's Rules of Order to ensure more efficient conduct of meetings. And finally, the report recognizes that councilmembers may need more information to make informed decisions and have different preferences for that information, and so it recommends that the city manager explore ways to provide that information and balancing those needs with limited staff resources. And so effective use of one-on-one meetings and other tools is recommended in the report. With that, I'm available for questions. Ms. Dobby is available for questions as well, and I will return this to the mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney Jensen. So we're going to open up to council questions, and when Councilmember Chow comes back, we'll let her also have the time to ask questions. So at the moment, do we have council questions? So I'd like to ask a couple of questions, Ms. Dobby. So can you state your professional background?
Well, one thing is, I'm technically challenged, so. Yes, I have been a public lawyer for over 30 years. I have been an in-house and an out-house counsel. I served at the city of Long Beach as in-house counsel. I also served independently as a city attorney in the Contra Costa County City for eight years. I have, was a member of a partner in a very large law firm in LA. I've also run my own law firm, and so with respect to this particular type of project, I think during the course of my 30x-plus years, I probably have done about 400 of these. And I continue to want to improve local governments, and I guess that's why I'm still in the game.
Thank you. A follow-up question is, I know this is a fact-finding procedure. Can you state your procedures and how you're verifying facts against, you know, people's words, and so that the public and us understand how you arrive at your conclusions?
Yeah, you usually start something like this, and you look at people who are, you know, sort of witnesses or slash complainants who may have issues and concerns, depending upon the topic. At that point, you know, I interviewed, I think as the report indicates, 16 current and former staff. In doing that, I asked, I started with a smaller pool, and then I would ask each of the people I interviewed, who else might be a good person for me to interview, who may have views that are similar or different from yours? And from that, my list expanded, you know, six or seven more. As I concluded the interviews, I asked each person, I said, "Do you have documentation that supports your statements to me?" And honestly, in each of the cases, I received, for lack of a better term, a gaggle of emails and documents from each of the 16 who said, "Yeah, this shows, you know, this supports my position on this, this supports my position on that." So that's basically how you go about it. And then if you find, in the course of interviewing, that there may not be some consistency, at that point, then you say, "Aha, maybe I need to go back and figure out, is there a different opinion or different position," and so forth. And interesting enough, out of all the fact-finding or investigations, whatever you say, the consistency in statements from the 16 people I interviewed, supported by documents and email communications that they provided to me, as well as the 1,500 or so that I went through, you know, pretty consistent findings and recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Do we have questions from Councilmember Frueen and Vice Mayor Mohan? Councilmember Frueen? Oh, Vice Mayor Mohan, go ahead.
Good evening, Mrs. Dobby. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked you last week, which is, did both sides have the same opportunities to answer their questions and to explain their positions and to submit documentation?
Yes, and a very good question, Councilmember Mohan, Vice Mayor Mohan. Interestingly enough, nothing that they, either of them said contradicted what I had already discovered or had already pulled together from the 16 current and former staff. So there was no inconsistency there.
Just a follow-up question. Were there any restrictions put on the people you interviewed in terms of time or in terms of material?
With respect to the two councilpeople, no. I mean, they were invited, if they had additional information, to send me additional information. And, you know, I didn't receive any additional information, but again, you know, the issues, from my perspective, both had more than ample opportunity to respond, and they were also given my business cell, so if they had anything else they wanted to add, they were invited to do that.
And did they?
No, neither case.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Frueen?
So you said you've done about 400 of these such investigations?
Well, not necessarily with this particular subject matter, but yes. I also work with, pro bono work for the EOC, and do mediation and that kind of thing. I teach, you know, how to do investigations and that kind of thing, and I have served as an expert witness for, you know, if a investigation that either I have done or, you know, maybe an investigator, internal or external, has done for another agency, I serve, you know, as a credibility expert witness in that. I should also mention that I work all over the state. Because I was working in Long Beach and because I was working in the large LA law firm, I still have a lot of contacts, so I get called in from time to time to do these things. And a lot of my work, quite frankly, at this point, very much like similar here, you know, a city attorney or a county council will call me and say, "Hey, we got this report, what do we do with it?" So I help them assess, you know, based on my background and based on actually getting in the weeds on 400 of these. Maybe this one's 401, I don't know. I'll have to go back and count.
Thank you. Is there anything particularly unusual about this investigation?
No, other than the fact that the statements, again, I can't stress enough, the statements from the 16 current and former staff members were totally consistent.
Is there anyone that you would have liked to have interviewed that you did not get to interview?
Yes, I had reached out to former Mayor Paul, and based on time constraints and so forth, we didn't have time to do it, but in some cases there, I think I indicated in the report, those reviews will be ongoing, so I haven't conclusively decided anything on that.
I notice as well that when it comes to how you describe the quantity and quality of the evidence, you use a term of art which is substantial evidence. Would any of the evidentiary matters be supported by some greater level of evidence based upon your knowledge, training, and experience?
You know, I really can't answer that at this point. You know, my standard in going in to evaluate, you know, here's the allegation, okay? And what you do when you start one of these is you say, "Okay, if there are sufficient facts to support that by substantial evidence, then we're going to sustain that." So I didn't look much beyond that.
Got it, got it. With respect to particularly the factual allegation about the directing of hiring and firing decisions by councilmembers, is there anything unusual about that compared to the rest of the evidence that you reviewed?
In terms of this report or in terms of other reports that I've done?
This report and perhaps also in comparison to others that you've done.
That has, the directing of hiring, firing is increasingly, interestingly enough, all over the state of California, has become somewhat, you know, it's a resurgence. I've been in the business so long, you know, you see this, and then all of a sudden it comes back, so somewhat unusual, but not totally.
Got it. Is that qualitatively different from some of the other conduct that you've described in the report?
That piece, a little bit, you know, I can't really, I can't really address that at this point.
Got it, okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that, and I'll thank you again for all of your diligence in the matter. I have nothing else right now.
So, Mrs. Dobby, let me ask you one more question, is, I understand Councilmember Moore just made statements. She is diligent, she asks questions, that's what every councilmember should and probably is doing, and, but does that justify the findings that you found? Can a councilmember still be effective, diligent, without going into behaviors like what you described in your fact-finding report?
Well, my findings, interestingly enough, are sort of mirrored in one of the observations in the Civil Grand Jury Report, which basically said, "It's a balancing act." And every city council and so forth that I've ever worked with, you have certain councilmembers that are going to need more information. That's just how people make decisions. I've taught college, and I watch how people, you know, decide things, and some people need a little more over here or whatever. But to me, the key is that you have to figure out procedures and methodologies and so forth to balance that. Because what you have, you know, as I've indicated in the report, is a situation where you are limited on resources, as every other public agency throughout California right now. You've got limited staff time and so forth, so you've got to figure out how we can satisfy the need for information, and I'm all for that, versus when, you know, someone is, you know, all of this email and so forth just is so time-consuming and interferes with the other priorities that a department may have.
Thank you. So is it fair to say a councilmember can be as effective and as diligent and achieve the same or even better results without going into governing by emails or, you know, being
Yes.
untrustworthy of staff?
Absolutely, but it takes, you have to, you have to make a commitment to do that and to figure out a process that's going to work for you. I mean, I've been there, every city council that I've dealt with, either a special counsel or a city attorney, that's one of the jobs, and there has to be that commitment to say, "Okay, here's what I need to make this decision, and how can we figure out how to get that?" And I think one of my recommendations is that you work, in this case, through your city manager, and to come up with a mutually agreed process so that you can balance this out.
Okay, Mrs. Dobby, I have one question for our city attorney. When we, you know, authorize you to find a third-person investigator to look into this, because the Civil Grand Jury Report was being questioned, that it's not unbiased, did you do your due diligence in finding someone you think is unbiased and could provide us with fact-finding facts?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. So I have no questions.
Just one quick follow-up with respect to page five of your report. You noted that there was a brief grace period after the February 3rd workshop. Can you describe more about that grace period, how long it lasted, what, if anything, might have precipitated its end, and whether the behavior afterward was more or less the same as it was prior?
The grace period, and again, one of the other things that I did is I spent a lot of time watching your city council meetings, the current ones as well as the old ones and so forth. And again, this was based on, when I did interviews with current and former staff, they would say, "Hey, if you watch this on this item, you will see what I mean." Okay, so let me see what. There was probably about a three-week grace period, I'm not sure, I would be inconclusive to determine what started, but the email, the email onslaught, for lack of a better term, started at that point, and it gradually built up through March and April.
Thank you.
One more quick question for you. So the purpose of what you're doing is, is it to provide a background for the council, city council investigation to move forward, to have good governance? Is that your intention?
Oh, absolutely. You know, I'm in the, you know, everybody says, "Well, it's time for you to retire." No, no, no. You know, I grew up in local government, I want to make it better. You know, you have to look at these reports, they are fact-finding. You know, here are the facts, and you may agree or disagree or have a different opinion about what, you know, somebody said or something, but 16 people in this case are consistent. So what you do with that is not dwell on, you know, you're a bad person or, you know, too bad, you need too much information or whatever. What you do with that is you say, "Okay, now that we know," because what I found out was sort of an extension of what the grand jury, civil grand jury had discovered, "Now we know this, okay, so how do we take this information and move forward?" That's really what the quest is, and that's why the recommendations, and your city attorney has pointed out, I think, the most important part of this report, and those are the recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dobby. I don't have no questions. If there's no question from the councilmembers, I'd like to open up to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, I have about 21 requests to speak, as well as two group requests at 10 minutes each, so we're looking at about 83 minutes worth of public comment.
And how about online?
That is including online. Well, now we have about at least 10 hands raised, so probably adds about, oop, see more, so we probably are looking at another 30 minutes.
Okay, so.
Probably two hours worth of public comment.
Okay, so we really like to limit to about an hour or so, so I would request everyone to do a two-minute comment instead of three. I want to say that I want to be generous so that people can speak what they're mind. Yes, last night was CUSD, we were limited to one minute with 55 speakers. So, and I understand former Mayor Darcy Paul made the request to be first to speak, so I would welcome you to speak first. You did do a 10-minute because of five-person, so is it any way you can reduce it to eight minutes instead of 10s, because everybody's taking a one-minute off?
Madam City Mayor, thank you very much for that courtesy. I do greatly appreciate it. It's nice to meet the investigator, Linda Dobby, in person. It's always great to see everyone in the chambers. I will endeavor to be as fast as I can. I will tell you, my attempt here is solution-making and conciliatory efforts. I started out at 25 minutes today. I've already cut down 15 minutes, and so if you need to pull me off the stage, go ahead and feel free to do that. I just ask.
We have 10 minutes for you.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Especially given the fact as well that I'm identified in this.
All right, thank you.
I do appreciate the time. Okay, give me one moment to start my own clock. 10 minutes for 10 years.
I ask you one question. Your email does request you want all five councilmembers to be here. We had two councilmembers that are not here.
I did, but.
Are you okay with it?
I was assuming that perhaps you would kind of, you know.
Should we ask Councilmember Moore to come back?
You know, I think that they could probably listen, and let me kind of precede the pot there. You know, based upon my comments, I mean, if they're compelling along with the rest of the public's comments, you know, if this is truly one of those conciliatory, kind of, "Let's make this system better" types of things, nothing stops you from continuing.
So you're okay with them not here?
Nothing stops you from continuing the meeting, right?
All right.
And getting your councilmembers back, so.
All right, thank you. Just want to verify that.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very, very much, Mayor Way. 10 minutes for 10 years. Good evening. I am Darcy Paul, the immediate past mayor of Cupertino, and a member of the Cupertino City Council, from the end of 2014 until the end of 2022, last year. I am here this evening to address the agenda item for this special meeting. Several people are contributing their time to me tonight for these 10 minutes, and I would like to acknowledge them here now. Tessa Parish, Eric Schaefer, Lisa Warren, and Martin Wan, thank you for kindly allocating your speaking time. Physicist Neil deGrasse Tyson recommended, when asked which books everyone should read, that people read eight books in order to, quote, "Glean profound insight into most of what has driven the history of the Western world," end quote. The Age of Reason by Thomas Paine. world, end quote. The Age of Reason by Thomas Paine is recommended by Dr. Tyson, quote, to learn how the power of rational thought is the primary source of freedom in the world, end quote. Rational thought tells me that we need to be working on actual problems and the major issues that we addressed while I was in office. By way of just a few significant examples, we need to get the environment right. Transit is deeply important infrastructure that we haven't completed and which we have the opportunity to improve significantly. But now we are staring down a fiscal crisis locally. I believe that our community produces exemplary practices and nurtures excellent people. And although if you don't understand my position there, what you see in effect might not be understood, but what you're looking at is a source of deep optimism. Why is it optimistic when I stand here and remind people, just like I was reminded countless times when I was in office, remember who you work for? That is not a threat. That is a statement of the core value of our system of governance. You work for the public. And using rational thought in the absence of fear and favor tells us this, despite the fact that we do an exemplary job, that is no excuse for stagnation. That is no reason not to keep constantly improving or constantly asking questions. And it is not only precisely the reason why we must work together, it also points a clear direction as to how we can work together. We cannot fear the process. We cannot demonize questions. But yes, of course, we should not demonize each other either. And so my ask as a resident and voter of Cupertino to our city council, to Mayor Hung Way, to Vice Mayor Sheila Mohan, to Councilmember Liang Chao, to Councilmember J.R. Fruen, to Councilmember Kitty Moore, is that you work with each other and that you work with staff. Understand that the dynamics and conceptions of that work are a matter of perspective. It will be challenging at times to respond to challenging questions. If you are doing the responding, please know that your provision of information and materials sits at the very core of what comprises the aspirations of our society towards openness, thoughtfulness, and the arrival at a coherent result. And while not utopian, it is the closest we can possibly get to the more perfect union that is in the fabric of our social charter. If you are doing the asking, please do so in a manner designed specifically to relieve the interpersonal and systemic concerns. These are concerns which, from what I experienced, can can and should be addressed through the human interactive dynamic. We did a lot in my eight years in office. One thing that I noticed is that when people get together for coffee or a meal, they are far less likely to attack each other. That's why I think that in your upcoming budget, even though we have constraints, you should allocate an amount to let you meet with at least one other council member that you don't regularly communicate with outside of the meetings at least once a month, and work with staff to figure out ground rules of interaction and maybe even the same types of interfacing opportunities. The current path is not the way to get things done. It's not the way to improve anything, including the project that has challenged our city over the years. And that division really has to end with us talking to each other as people. Although I consistently challenged us to question how the project would have helped alleviate the housing crisis, I was also constantly working on addressing and improving not just the project as it was then proceeding, but our interactions regarding it. Mayor Way, you know this to be true. I knew that we had to start communicating with the property owner. And that's why each of us met on site last year with clear and explicit guidelines not to communicate serially with the property owner and staff. The work was happening, but they have to build on a cleaned up site. That kind of requirement is not negotiable. That's a matter of public safety and the health of people. Process and doing the work and asking questions allowed us to ensure that contaminants would be cleaned up properly and the the project would succeed. And this, despite the policy based concerns raised, which I must emphasize, is not a reason to persecute. As for the systemic, there are two issues that are really at play. First, entitlement. Who gets to have the voice? Who gets to be listened to? Whose decisions control? Second, back channeling. This report accuses two people of back channeling. It accuses me of directing hiring and firing decisions. Let me tell you, the real issue is this. In a community where the decisions are made by certain people, how do we arrive at a point where the sense of entitlement does not inappropriately affect the decisions? I will give you one major example of this: lobbying. Lobbying. In Cupertino, as in many jurisdictions, if you receive money to affect our public process and the decisions made by the elected officials, then you have to report yourself as a paid lobbyist. Prior to this election cycle, a nonprofit organization in our community sued the city over this lobbyist reporting law. In the absence of this requirement, undisclosed back channeling occurs. Back channeling is what it sounds like. It's finding a channel in the back in order to arrive at your destination. But in the public process, you have policymakers and people who are elected openly to make the decisions that you make openly. And part of that ultimate decision making process by the voters is to know who is getting paid money, to try to influence the decisions of the people whom they voted into office, and the processes of the people who are paid and benefited to carry out the work of the public. That is why we are not, in reality, at the intersection of a law that is being cited because people ask questions, where statements are distorted in order to make them fit anonymous interpretations, where the accused are neither investigated nor accused by disinterested peers, and are also not provided the ability to confront their accusers. That is not the intersection we are at. We are at a four way intersection of entitlement and back channeling, as well as openness and efficacy. I hope that we navigate this intersection with the understanding of how each of these factors are best approached in order to optimize our journey. My other request to you, the city council that represents me personally in our local government, takes me to the title of these remarks, 10 minutes for 10 years. Yes, I am proud of my service in office, but it was more than enough to last a lifetime. If there are people to help and a reason to serve again, I plan to consider the question no earlier than in 10 years, but it's not something that is an endpoint or an aspiration. And it was most definitely not something that I remotely believed would drag me back into these chambers nine and a half years ahead of that time for something like this. It's a matter of helping people, and that must start with relationships. And I hope that you take that sentiment to heart in your service as well. In the meantime, family and professional work are my priorities. Let's complete the circle here and return to Dr. Neil deGrasse Tyson. I leave you now with this thought as to one of the other eight books he recommends that everyone read and why, The Prince by Machiavelli, to learn that people not in power will do all they can to acquire it, and people in power will do all they can to keep it. The purpose of my service, I realize now, was a response as a hopeful solution to the tendencies associated with power. I stand before you now to ask that you think about whether perhaps our problems, as now couched, might be better addressed and solved by talking to each other rather than by the use of public resources in the current manner in the midst of a severe fiscal crisis, the resolution of which is going to take cooperation and collegiality. Those are the hopes I leave you with. And while I say to you, 10 minutes for 10 years, I'm around. Let's get coffee or lunch sometime. Thank you very much. I am going to go. It's not disrespect, but I'm going to go spend time with my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping, please. No clapping, please. Please no clapping. Thank you. This is a protocol for having council meetings. Thank you. And next, please.
Yes, Mayor. So we have Kathy Helgerson, followed by Donna Austin, followed by Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Kathy.
Okay, what do we have unions for? The staff has a union. Why aren't you using it? And it's the Cupertino Employees Association Union, International Federation of Professionals and Technical Engineers, I called them. If there is a complaint of staff, why don't they contact the union? They're paying dues. What's what are the dues for? This is ridiculous. No mention anywhere, not even with you. Nothing about the union. I want to bring the union in. I want them to look at this. Okay, I really do. And I really feel that Kitty had every right to speak. You kept her from speaking. And I'll tell you what, our city council is split. Liang and Kitty on one side, and you other three on the other. And this is why we have a problem here in Cupertino. Okay, now you hire the city managers and the lawyer, and it's all bias. Okay, this whole system is biased. I was going to talk about a lot of other things here. I write emails. I sit at the coffee meetings. All of you have been contacted by my emails and not an answer. The staff is a problem, and I'll tell you why. They're not doing their job because they're in a union. They don't have to. If they if you guys have a problem, they're going to sue you. That's what unions do. Wake up. I've been Teamsters, Labor is International. I know all about unions. And I called them today, and I'm going to talk to the union boss over there, and I'm going to tell him to come in here and talk to you people. If those staff people have a problem, they need to file a formal complaint with the union. Okay, whatever it is. And she had every right to go after the pollution at Valco, and I'm going after it, too. Okay, so anybody in this audience and anybody on the listening to me, write the city council, come to the meetings, and stop this nonsense. Okay, you guys have split the, I can't believe it. The Cupertino city, you've split the city, just like the government has split the government. What the hell's the matter with everybody? Okay, I feel sorry for all of you. All right? And I will keep working to do something about this, especially with the union.
Please refrain from clapping. I'm not going to repeat that. Somebody claps again, is going to leave the room. Okay, please. This is the order of the, we would want to keep the order of the meeting to be civil. So please do not clap.
So welcome, Donna.
Okay. Mayor Hung Way and all the city council, I'm really sorry to be here. This is really a sad thing for me. I would like to begin with a quote from the California cities that say, honesty and respect for the dignity of each individual should be reflected in every word and action taken by council members 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is serious and continuous responsibility. Be clear about representing the city for personal interest. So that's where that's where I my standard or our standard should be, is treat everyone with respect. But I want to tell you a true story. I was at a first shovel photo op with Darcy Paul at the Stevens Creek Market. It's named Canyon Crossing. Darcy changed the times and dates three times, or four. And I mentioned getting organized with the dates was a moving target, and very difficult. Darcy literally yelled at me and said I should be grateful that he had gotten designs for the Cupertino Historical Society. I am speaking only for myself. I am not speaking for any other organization when I say that I responded very calmly to him and said not to yell at me, and that I was grateful to him for helping with this, but it was so hard because we had to get equipment and people. So I took care of that thing. And he didn't apologize. And he and but if he treated me just an ordinary citizen, I even supported him in the very beginning, what is he like with the and from what the reports I see, how he's treating staff? Liang says, and that's a quote
Thank you, Donna. That is your time.
Right in the paper, that I
Please respect the time limit. Our next speaker is Brooke Ezit, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Hima Kundargi.
So just to clarify, because of the number of speaker, we are limited to two minutes instead of three. Sorry. Yeah.
So can I get?
No, you can't.
No, I can't? Okay.
Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you. When I voted for Councilmembers Moore and Chao, I did it with the expectation and knowledge that they would be asking questions. In fact, if they did not, I would have considered a dereliction of duties. Asking questions is not an assault. Access to information is the right of the public and council members. To assert otherwise is to question the very foundation of our democracy. In 2011, the council received a letter from County Executive Jeffrey Smith excoriating the behavior of former Mayor Barry Chang. And there were all sorts of allegations made in there. And what did the council do? The council did nothing. Sometimes the smartest thing is to do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Hima Kundargi, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. On a Tuesday. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I've thought a lot about this. Kitty and Liang, I have known for a very, very long time, and I have seen them performing through their civic duty. I consider both of them two of the most important people in my social life. I would trust them implicitly with anything in my life or my family. They are both citizens of the highest regard. They are intelligent. They're empathetic. I have seen them bend over backwards to listen to residents of this city time and time again for many, many years. And as you know, being a city council member takes up a lot of your time. You're separated from your family. Both Liang and Kitty have donated many, many hours to this city. This city should be grateful for the service that they have given. I trust them implicitly. And if I ever had any reason or need, I know that they would be there to support me in any way. It is not often that you find people like that, especially that are on a city council. But that is my regard of them. They are both extremely intelligent people. I have dealt with Liang many years before she was on city council with issues pertaining to our neighborhoods. And Kitty, I have, she lives in my neighborhood, and she is of the highest order. So these people are donating their life and their time to their city. As I said before, I would follow them anywhere, and I will do it again. My hope is that the city council can go forward, cooperate, and communicate, and cherish the hours that people are devoting to try to make their city a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next, we have Hima Kundargi, followed by San Ar, followed by Tracy Edwards. Welcome, Hima.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor and council members, and dear friends. I'm Hima Kundargi, a resident for about 28 years in Cupertino, have actively participated in different projects, different things in Cupertino, worked with different council members, worked with the Sadiq staff. All these years that I have worked, I've never had any problem with the wonderful support I got from the staff, from the city council. They all worked wonderfully until this recent episode. I totally, totally support the report that was made public. And I firmly believe in the transparency of by the city council, city council members. It is absolutely critical for a democratic society. Let this report drive home the point that no city council member is above the law and accountability is paramount for the city to work well. Thank you very much, and I did it in one minute.
Thank you, Hima. Next, we have Next, we have San Ar, followed by Tracy Edwards, followed by Glenn Fishler.
Good evening, Mayor V., Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. I would like to urge all of you to think of yourselves as leaders for the city. Leaders solve problems. You cross boundaries, and you connect with people at a human level. And I can tell you that the city wants you to work together. This is not an opportunity to further polarize the community. It is not an opportunity to divide the community further. I have read the report. Yes, there is some truth in the report. And the reason there is truth in the report is because these are humans. These are ordinary citizens that were elevated to the dais, just like yourselves. They are not career politicians, and they have their flaws and imperfections. What I saw in the report were signs of people that were using email versus communicating in person. What I saw in the report was signs of people not being trained on the use of PRAs and using excessive requests for information. And what I saw in the report was tendencies to ask more and dive deep in detail. All of that are not a flaw in itself. There is something called a closed-loop system, where the city manager at that time should have given feedback, and I saw none of that in the report. I saw no indication that the city manager engaged to collaborate with the council members to give them feedback and help them to understand the effects of their actions and help them to improve on their behaviors. That is what we see in our day-to-day workplace. A lot of us in our day-to-day jobs are managing people. We have to give feedback in the moment. We don't wait for a year. We don't wait for two years. We don't take them to a grand jury, and we don't fire them. Feedback is given in the moment. It's given immediately. It's given in person over a cup of coffee. And I hope the city manager did that at that time. The manager is not there at this time. We can't determine where she was or where he was. But I urge you to please operate as leaders, not divide the community, reach out across the community, and move forward and collaborate as one team. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Tracy Edwards, followed by Glenn Fishler, followed by Xin Pei.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Edwards, and I am the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Cupertino Sunnyvale. It's important to remember why we're here today. The Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury received multiple complaints concerning the behavior of the City of Cupertino council members toward city staff. The complaints were serious enough that the grand jury undertook an investigation resulting in the report entitled "A House Divided." Some of the council members raised concerns about the grand jury's investigative process and accuracy of the remarks made in the report. In response, the council hired an outside attorney to investigate and review the conclusions in the civil grand jury report. And Attorney Dobie, through her work, confirmed the findings of the grand jury. We should also remember that the civil grand jury is an important county watchdog organization. As an investigative body, the grand jury examines complaints about the actions or performance of cities, county agencies, and public officials. The grand jury exists to ensure the best interests of Santa Clara County residents are being served. The process has concluded, and it's now time to take the appropriate actions to remedy the findings of the grand jury as confirmed by the independent investigation. And rather than complain, let's applaud good governance in action. The process has demonstrated the most fundamental and critical tenets of good governance: accountability, leadership, integrity, stewardship, and transparency. We encourage the council to embrace the recommendations made in the report and turn their full attention to improving the workings of the city. These remarks are respectfully submitted by the League of Women Voters of Cupertino Sunnyvale.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, we have Glenn Fishler, followed by Xin Pei, followed by Sonali. Welcome, Glenn.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, city council members, and city staff. My name is Glenn Fishler, and I've lived in Cupertino since 1997, and I'm representing myself. After learning and reading about the December '22 grand jury investigation report, I became concerned, and I began watching city council meetings regularly via livestream beginning in January of this year, in an attempt to better understand what's going on, what's right, what's wrong with our city, our city government. After watching most of this year's city council meetings via livestream, I've personally observed some of the issues identified in the grand jury report. And frankly, I'm disappointed that the behavior patterns identified in the report persist. Following last week's public release, I've now read the independent investigator's fact-finding report and recommendations, and I believe all of them should be accepted and implemented. I'm hopeful the city council will approve the recommendations in the fact-finding report in tonight's meeting, and I look forward to seeing improvements in action in future meetings to create more efficient and effective governance for our city. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Glenn. Next, we have Xin Pei, followed by Sonali, followed by Long Zhao.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff. It's Xin Pei, and I'm currently student attending Cupertino High School. In recent findings of the fact-finding reports, there has been further specification and documentation of abuse and mistreatment towards staff, which create a toxic dysfunctional environment that impact not only the people, but also the operation of the city. This needs to change. Bombarding staff with continuous emails, public criticism, blaming staff, and more must end. And this is not just a one-time behavior. This is a clear cycle and pattern of mistreatment, and people responsible for it must be held accountable. Please immediately implement the recommendations within the report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Xin Pei. And next, we have Sonali, followed by Long Zhao, followed by Kathy Steiki. Welcome, Sonali.
Good evening, everyone. I've lived in this city for 20-plus years, and this is the first time I have ever attended a meeting, because I feel like these proceedings are reeking of petty politics. I think you guys really need to work together. Such small matters shouldn't even come to such big stages where the whole city knows what you guys are doing inside. So please, work together with each other and do not make a spectacle of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonali. Next, we have Long Zhao, followed by Kathy Steiki, followed by Seva. Welcome, Long.
Good evening, city members. My name is Long Zhao, and I speak for myself. In the civil grand jury's report, it really surprised me. City Council Member Moore asked the staff for the receipt of a credit card expense. It's so surprising for me. How could that even happen? How could it even happen in the first place? Shouldn't that be already a policy that you must provide all the credit card expense from the city credit card? Shouldn't that already be an expense? Already be a policy? I'm not an expert on this, on the security, but I already found many ways to exploit this fact. And we're talking about distrust. Okay, I want to tell you a secret. I work -- actually, it's an open secret, okay? It's not something secret. I work for a software company, and my company has a policy called zero trust policy. Yes, you have it right. It's Z-E-R-O, zero trust policy. And the philosophy is never trust, always verify. This is how we can gain customers' trust. And Cupertino should also implement the same policy, just adopt it, and don't take it personal. So make it a policy and a culture. Always provide enough information to verify it. And some council members, you like to play nice. Okay, yeah, it's great to have such neighbors, but I don't think you have my trust to serve as a council members. And I really appreciate the council members who be tough as nail, ask hard questions, and drill to the bottom. Verify before making any question.
Thank you, Long, that is your time. That is your time, thank you.
Okay, all right, okay.
Next, we have Kathy Steiki, followed by Seva, followed by Venkat. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. Dear council members, this whole thing has been very confusing to me, and I watch the council meetings from my home on television. What I heard up at the dais was from several of the city council members that the civil grand jury report was not to be believed because the statements were taken and were not under oath. So I wondered what was wrong here. Maybe something was wrong with the civil grand jury. So I continued to be very, very confused about that. And I'd like to know if that's true. If they weren't taken under oath, does that mean I shouldn't believe it? Then I thought, well, it's very nice that the current city council had agreed to get a special consultant in and investigate that. And because the civil grand jury report wasn't fully released. So what actually occurred during Mrs. Dobie's unbiased opinion was she seemed -- it seemed to me that she confirmed, but once again, I'm hearing they -- she didn't do the investigation under oath, so that's not to be believed. So this is all very confusing. What are we supposed to believe? And I think that in part is part of the problem here. One group is saying we should believe it, another group is saying there's no oath, so we shouldn't believe it. So I'm really sorry that those folks up on the dais have been accused of being supported by builders, and their campaign was supported by builders. I think that's absolutely absurd. That's my opinion. And in closing, I wanted to mention that I've heard a lot of criticism about our city manager, and I personally want to sign off by saying she gets my vote. I think she's doing an exemplary job under the conditions that exist today, and I hope that things improve so that she will remain with us, because I think she's doing an exemplary job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have Seva, followed by Venkat.
Hi, my name is Seva. I am Cupertino resident for the last 20 years. We elected you to be our representatives and leaders and help us solve the problems. You are our leaders, and we want you to act like one and work with each other and address those issues by working together rather than fighting with each other and accusing each one. I know I was a commissioner, housing commissioner, for a couple of years. I know the training that I got is very minimal, so maybe adding some training to help the new council members to understand the laws and what they can do, what they cannot do, might go a long way rather than addressing this in a special council meeting. But at the same time, I wanted to thank the staff and you for your time that you're allocating for this one. I wish you all the best, and I wanted you guys to work together and solve our problems, but don't fight with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Seva. Next, we have Venkat Ar, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Mooney Maripatla. Welcome, Venkat.
Good evening, council. I'm Venkat Ranganathan. I have been a Bay Area resident for 30 years and more than 20 years in Cupertino. I have known the council members, Liang and Kitty, and former Mayor Darcy in their capacity as council members and mayor over the last few years. They have been very helpful with city issues that have been brought to their attention by me and my fellow neighbors. They have been handling it in a professional manner and within the parameters of what is possible for them. I have seen that they have been even -- they have been very professional, even when the barrage of emails sent to them sometimes are harsh. And I can easily relate to items that I was very much involved. One was on the small cell tower issue, where I had a tower placed within 20 feet from my house, and I had been communicating not only with the city council, along with the staff, and also with commissions. And in that, I also worked with the city manager, because they were trying to remove the park strip with all my plans. The city manager, former ex-city manager, helped with mitigating that issue. And similarly, in last October, when an unhoused person suddenly appeared on Portal Avenue and occupied both sides of the sidewalk, once again, we communicated as a neighborhood with the council and the city manager, with all the staff, also met with the neighbors. These were all done in a professional manner. We did not see that there is any tensions if that tower there didn't surface, and that's how the city should run. So I would urge the council and the city to lead and work in unison for the betterment of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Venkat. Next, we have a group request by Rhoda Frye. Ravi Kiran Singh, Carrie O'Leary, William Hershey, and Liana Crabtree have ceded their time to Rhoda for 10 minutes.
City Clerk, could you please put up my slides? I'd like to thank Bill, Carrie, Ravi, and Liana for ceding their time to me. These slides are online. They can be brought up, please. Underwritten communications. While I was thinking over this situation, I was reminded by this nursery rhyme that you'll see up there. I won't read it to you. You can read it to yourself. It rhymes. So instead of squabbling, set your differences aside and work on the budget. At the same time, Ms. Dob has indicated further investigations. I'm horrified. Isn't this more than enough? Please clarify during deliberations. Next slide. Now, please remember who you work for. This org chart is from the budget. And you'll see on the top of the org chart, I made it a little bigger so you can see, that's the citizens of Cupertino. That's us. And we voted for Liang Chow, who was on the school board for two years and previously and already on the council for four years. She already had a four-year record right here on the council. And Kitty Moore had a two-year record when we voted for her on the planning commission, and then she served another two years. So why are they suddenly being vilified? We elected them to think independently, ask tough questions, get results, and they have. They have gotten results. Next slide, please. You know, many of us already know their qualifications, their experience, and their efficacy, frankly. Council Moore was, when she was assigned to VTA, she was highly valued by her peers from other cities and elected to leadership positions. Moore also brought the city into compliance for financial reporting, as shown in the grand jury's "Show Me the Money" report. Next slide, please. So the last thing we need on the city council is yes-men, right? The House -- and I want to go into the budget, because it's really near and dear to my heart. I think it's near and dear to many of us. The House Divided Report reiterated financial troubles from the Moss-Adams report, and said that the city has weak or non-existent internal financial controls. Deficiencies have existed for several years and pose potentially serious operating and financial risks to the city. And then it goes on to say the Audit Committee plan needs to be vetted by the council. Now, that was a pretty big word when I read the word "vetted." So what does "vetted" mean? It means critically review and evaluate for official approval. So we need to really find the balance here. We need -- it's good to get the different viewpoints and that we have double-checking by council members and residents so that we have a better outcome. The report mentions that are -- that talks about the gray area between information requests. And, you know, our city is better because Chow and Moore asked questions. They've -- Moore pressed for -- They, Moore pressed for compliance city financial reporting, discovered payments for services that had not been rendered. Prevented construction on sites that are not suitable for habitation as mentioned by former mayor Paul. We need to strike a balance, that's why I have the illustration there. Next slide please. So how did we get here? You know, it seems to me that there was a failure to effectively communicate and resolve differences in a timely manner. And here's a quote from the report, "City staff's disregard of the city ordinance being of mandatory financial disclosures in the past added to the perception of city council that staff was not completely fulfilling their job responsibilities." So why didn't this, this dissonance get nipped in the bud? Why didn't human resources or city manager address alleged communications issues timely? Now, another thing to consider during this time, and some of these things are not mentioned in the report and I think they're important, is the environment that we were, we'd been facing. COVID created a very challenging work environment for everyone. And also, staff knew in December 2021 with respect to departures that the city was facing financial difficulty. So, you know, from then on, might have been a good time to find new work. And the report also mentions that, hey, only one person who left took a lesser job. This implies that others fared better. Now, I really appreciate council member's motion, Fruen's motion for the work item. The city attorney will investigate and report back on other violations in municipal code with respect to the council staff and commissioner staff relations. And this is where the emphasis is in big letters, "So that the city council may establish policy." I'm going to repeat that, "So that the city council may establish policy," right? To prevent such violations approved in the future. This is good, next slide please. So, do we establish policy or punitive measures? I say, let's go with council member Fruen's, let's establish policy. Now, remember, until Kitty Moore repeatedly raised concerns, financial reports were not posted timely. This actually was a violation of the Cupertino's municipal code, of state government laws. Now, did the city attorney upon learning that, refer the treasurer to the district attorney? No, of course not, that would be counterproductive, we get along, we fix things. Now, worrisome to me with respect to the civil grand jury report was that few, if any, of the recommendations were implemented, and this has to do with the Moss Adams report. Financial risk management oversight is key area of responsibility of every city council. Good governance requires that city councils routinely review the financial operations of the city, identifying areas of weakness and/or risk and oversee effective policies and procedures for implementation by city managers. Let's be proactive here, next slide please. So I mostly agree with the recommendations. I really want to talk a little bit about the avoiding governance by email. You know, this does require bilateral cooperation and response with candor. And I have to say that at times, since in my many years of residing in Cupertino, going around about 40, I have found it challenging to get information from staff and sometimes I feel like I'm playing a game of charades. So, and I also applaud the new, the new reports that we have in the packets with Q and A and a written record helps to clarify things. And of course, yes, we do need balance. With respect to relying on staff, decisions made in a vacuum are doomed for failure. It's okay to double check and communicate findings appropriately, but yes men hinder success. Relying on staff got us, the public storage building that fails to comply with the Norris Deans's special area of the general plan and got us a hideous signage that fails to comply with municipal code and then we've got the oversight of Hazmat at Valco, et cetera. So council members should be applauded for finding out what other cities do, for looking at other things. In fact, I want you to know, years ago, Public Works Director thanked me for my research in obtaining garbage pickup times across multiple cities. This paved the way for a yes vote by council to have earlier pickup times in the tri-school area to promote bike pit safety following the fatal bike accident of Montavista student. Would our council members be vilified for having done the same? Let's look at the next slide please, and last slide. Now, you know, as I said, beautiful things can happen when people work together. So as I mentioned in a previous meeting, I would recommend that y'all do the armband training to improve relations. And we need all five council members to work together. Each brings a unique set of skills as I mentioned at the last council meeting. Chow and Moore were elected for their attentiveness to Cupertino residents' needs and commitment to understanding the issues thoroughly before recommending policy. Let's focus on strengths, resolve weaknesses and build a trust circle between citizens and council and staff. And the last thing I want to leave you with is, please, let's fix city hall. City staff has voiced a concern, this was in the, in the, in the reports, that their workplace, the city hall, had not been renovated and seismically improved. Our 2022 council set the city hall renovation into motion only to have it stalled by this council. So please, let's get on to the work, let's keep our staff safe and continue the good work from the previous council to renovate the city hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you Rhoda, next we have Mooney Mahdi Patla followed by Jean Bedord followed by Govind. Welcome Mooney.
Can you get this slide projector?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good evening mayor, vice mayor and council, so my name is Mooney Mahdi Patla, I'm a Cupertino resident. I wasn't planning to speak, but decided to speak because of what's going on. I know mayor, you said, you know, this is a fact-finding mission. Let's be honest, let's call it what it is, it's, you know, organized witch hunt. Okay, I'll repeat, it's an organized witch hunt. Okay, so I would expect, you know, all of you city council members agree with each other, you know, you all bring different skills to the table. But then, we expect you to work together, right, not go after each other. We expect you to work together, not go after each other. And I'm really saddened to see, you know, what's happening here in terms of proceedings. And by the way, let me remind, pre-council that was, you know, before 2018, there was a council member that did more egregious thing of, you know, directly threatening city attorney and even leading to the firing of the city attorney that caused, you know, city roughly around, the city attorney, fired city attorney, sued the city and $250,000, you know, it cost taxpayer dollars, right? And that council member was not reprimanded, okay? That council member was not publicly executed like this. What you're doing is a travesty compared to, you know, what happened then, okay? Let me come back to this chart, our chart. If you really look at this chart, topmost is the residents and the next is council and everybody reports to the council. So that means, you know, the council has authority to ask for information from the city staff, right? If, whatever recommendation that they are making, if it's not backed by facts and data, they have right to ask for it. That's what, you know, Liang Chow and Kitty Moore do, they ask for details, there is nothing wrong with that. By the way, in the private world, your boss asks for data and you don't provide the data, you'll be fired. Okay, that's how the private works. And of course, you know, this is a unionized environment, I understand, you know, things are a little bit tough, so touchy-feely. But then, we don't need to prosecute members that are serving the council, the city, thank you.
Next we have Jean Bedord followed by Govind followed by Siva. Welcome Jean.
Good evening mayor Wei, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I am here to commend you for the excellent fact-finding report. As you know, I have faithfully attended city council meetings for several years and reported back to readers in my Cupertino Matters newsletter. I have observed firsthand the dysfunction of the council and the disrespect for staff, cringing as I watched meetings. I urge you to focus on an action plan to improve communication between staff and council. Today, I sent out a lengthy separate email regarding PRA requests by council members Kitty Moore and Liang Chow, which clearly shows the garbled communication with staff. I have an updated list of even more PRAs which have been submitted by those two people. Their assumptions about information are deeply flawed and could be easily remedied by one-on-one communication. I too, at one point in my career, thought my written communication was perfectly clear, only to find out it wasn't. And that respectful conversations were absolutely essential to solving problems. Both council members Moore and Chow lack management experience and that's reflected in their communication styles. Both have been individual contributors, not team players. So they need to learn to work together with other team members, the staff, to deal with the significant challenges being faced, facing our city. Tonight, I urge the council to focus on improving communication with the staff with respect and a better understanding of your quite different roles. Thank you.
Thank you Jean, next we have Govind followed by Siva followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome Govind.
Good evening, mayor Wei, vice mayor Mohan and council members and city staff. First of all, I want to make sure that I'm kind of clear, this has nothing to do with the city manager or city attorney. What I'm going to address is essentially the council members who we elect. So I think the most important thing, what I can gather from whatever I have learned, I didn't plan to come and speak today, so, but, so it's going to be a little impromptu, but please see if I'm, you know, if it makes sense to you. I think the most important thing I have learned is essentially that everybody needs training. It's the staff which also needs training, it's the council which needs training, it's to a large extent people who are involved, like me, who are working for you, that we also need training. So I have no issues with the idea of training, that part I think we should all kind of adhere to, we should embrace it and we should kind of become better versions of ourselves. The second thing I would like to say is that, you know, I, I wouldn't have got involved at all in city matters, I have, I'm here for 30 years. I came to this country more than 38 years ago, first time, at that time, you know, it was more to do for some other kind of work. And my classmates have been here for more than 45 years. We know from the, you know, interactions, how, you know, what's, what's very good about this particular country. And we have come here to contribute, we are trying to make our professional career run. Please understand, we didn't want to get involved in many of these things and we just got involved because at, at that time, we had an issue with one of the council, one of the mayors and I requested a council member to give us time to talk to her. She gave, twice we met with her, third time she refused to even meet, so I think that pretty much draws me, drew me into this particular thing. So I respect your time, I would appreciate if you people can go with a conciliatory approach to this and that will be the best outcome I can think of. Thank you.
Thank you Govind, next we have Siva followed by Jennifer Sharon followed by Bern Steves. Is Siva still, okay, it looks like Siva no longer wishes to speak. Jennifer Sharon followed by Bern Steves followed by Vinod. Welcome Jennifer.
Good evening mayor Wei, council members and staff. I've, I've struggled with my comments tonight. Unlike smaller complaints, the magnitude and severity of what has been laid before us by the independent investigator and the grand jury seems too large for a quick comment. I want to thank the council first for their transparency and sharing this information with the public. It's the right thing to do to allow all of us to understand how our elected officials are serving the public. But next, after transparency comes accountability. It should be noted that these particular code violations, malfeasance and continuing misconduct were not in response to unjust laws or to address some injustice. I haven't heard any remorse or desire to change the working relationships with staff from the two council members or former mayor Darcy Paul as they were listed in the report. Either of these two things would be considerations to mitigate the severity of what steps to take next. I really had hoped to hear that tonight. For the sake of our city, we need to make it clear that our council members cannot act in these ways. Attempts by political supporters to hero worship council members to avoid accountability should be rightfully ignored. You as a council must police yourself, we as residents are asking you to do that. You have several possible options including censure, referral to the DA or what many companies in the Bay Area call a performance review. The offenses in our city outlined in the independent investigator's report are persistent and significant. This is not about getting along or, you know, it's not about, it's about what happened and how we address that. I ask you tonight to show our residents that the functioning of our city is your top priority by way, by voting for censure and setting up criteria for performance plan in six months or a year with a referral if necessary. If the promises are not kept, let's keep our elected officials accountable, whether currently in office or recently left. Thank you.
Next we have Bern Steves followed by Vinod followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome Bern.
Good evening, mayor Wei, council members, staff and citizens. My name is Bern Steves, I have in the past been privileged to represent current and past members of the council, but today I'm here solely speaking for myself as a concerned citizen, a very concerned citizen. And what I'd like to focus on today is zooming out a little bit, looking a little bit at the bigger picture. And we've heard a great deal of talk today about something called an independent report written by somebody called Ms. Dolby who's sitting here to my right. Like Ms. Dolby, I'm also an attorney and we need to remember, what does an attorney do? An attorney acts for a client. There's no such thing as a free-floating, unbiased, neutral assessment by an attorney, an attorney acts for somebody. I've done mediation in the past where two parties said, you know, can you listen to us and tell us what you think? But again, that's only because I'm acting for both parties and both parties trust me to balance their interests. Now for whom was Ms. Dolby's report written? She says in her report, unless I missed something, that she was retained, but unless I missed it, she doesn't say who she was retained by. She was not retained, as I understand it, by the city council, but by the city administration. Which raises all kinds of questions of who exactly is the real client here? Any attorney worth his salt and certainly any attorney whose last name like mine ends in S remembers that as a challenge. And lastly, the whole thing started from something called a grand jury report written by a company called Lexstar that produces legal documents, you can see it in the PDF document. Who is the grand jury? Their job is to provide some critical input.
Thank you Bern, that is your time.
For city to.
Our final two speakers in community hall are Vinod followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome Vinod.
Good evening, respected mayor Wei and vice mayor Mohan. And we are seeing a pattern with the new elected city council members, especially the majority. They are targeting elected members. They removed first Ray from the planning commission, then they tried to remove Stephen Sharp, ex-city mayor. They couldn't succeed, now they are targeting other city council member. This is not fair. In a democratic system, in elected representatives. In a democratic system, in elected representatives, they do ask questions, you know? Even in private corporate world, people do ask questions. That's the right thing to do. And we all know that, you know, Chow and Kitty, they are one of the two most qualified people. They know how the city council machinery works very well. And finally, I just want to tell one thing. You know, we all live in a representative democracy. Please understand, people, citizens, council. Thank you.
Thank you, Vinod. And our final speaker in community hall is Claudio Bono. Welcome, Claudio.
Good evening, Mayor Wei. Good evening, Vice Mayor Mohan, city council, city staff. My name is Claudio Bono, Cupertino resident here for 10 years, and I'm only here to represent myself, no one else, and I'm going to go straight to the point. Just wanted to remind you all that you are all honorable. Not some, all of you, you were elected. So, you're all putting your time, all of you, not just some, as some may think. That's what you signed for, and so there is no two-party. And if there was one in Cupertino, there is just one, and that's the resident. And I know you all understand that. So, one could argue that some don't want to work together, just need to look at the recording. I didn't say it. So, let's not blame politics, we're far from the presidential. So, let's find a way to work together, let's move forward for Cupertino's sake, and adopt the resolution recommendation, and let's move forward. I have great faith in all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. And that was our final speaker in community hall, so we will move to Zoom. There are 12 speakers with their hands raised within the limit. Our first speaker is Pamela Hershey, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Sima Linskog. Welcome, Pamela.
Good evening, Mayor Wei and Vice Mayor Mohan and council members and city staff. My name is Pamela Hershey, and I've been a resident in Cupertino since my parents moved here in 1967, and I continue to reside here. I teach for the school districts and have done that for many years. I just wanted to say, we need people like Kitty Moore and council member Kitty Moore and Liang Chow. You know, we teach in school, the five Ws and the one H, which is, as everyone knows, is who, why, what, when, and where, and how. Those are, those are basic concepts that we teach as a strategy for reading. Those don't just apply to students, they apply to adults as well. When they read a document, or you read something, as the council members constantly do, that's what we want them to do, is question them, like, it's exactly what we teach. Why is it happening? You know, where? And how can we fix it? All of those are just very important questions. I don't understand why you can't, the council members that want those answers are not, are being accused of asking too many questions. I thank Kitty Moore and I thank Liang Chow for deep diving and finding facts, and do the very extensive research that they do. That's what council members should do. You're representative, you represent us, and representatives should know everything about something before they vote on it. And so that, thank you, Liang, thank you, Kitty, for your dedication, and also thank you to all the council members. But I do deeply appreciate members like them that really look for the facts and know the understanding of the five Ws and the one H. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Pamela. Next we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Sima Linskog, followed by Deborah Timmers. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor Wei, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham. I'm a resident of 35 years, and I'm currently a housing commissioner, speaking on my own behalf. I urge that the city council embrace the recommendations in this report, not just to consider them, but to embrace them. I am pleased that an attorney with Linda Govey's knowledge, training, and experience performed this investigation for Cupertino. I agree with the final sentence on page 23. Finally, and most importantly, I'm quoting, "Effective city governance is recognizing that there will be problems beyond anyone's control, and when those situations appear, the priority should be addressing the solution, not focusing on or blaming staff for what happened. Trust in city management staff is an essential component of effective municipal governance." Excuse me. I am a housing commissioner, as I mentioned, and I have also testified in an earlier city council meeting that, excuse me, council member Chow and council member Kitty Moore have tried to attempt to intimidate me, and I sent in my documents that showed that. I figure if I'm not even a paid person that relies on the goodwill of the council, and I get that kind of treatment, I can only imagine how it must feel if you're paid by these same people, and, and they are saying trash talk about you. I have listened for hours to the city council committee meetings, commission meetings, and city council meetings, and these two council members that I spoke of, Moore and Chow, as well as a former Darcy Paul, in public have expressed distrust and lack of respect to staff members. I've heard it many times. I know that many of you have not, and that's why you still support them, but it's not the questions you ask, it's how you ask them, it's how you treat people that is so important in this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Next we have Sima Linskog, followed by Deborah Timmers, followed by Rod Sinks. Welcome, Sima.
Respected Mayor Wei, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members, tonight I am speaking only on behalf of myself. The findings in the report submitted by Ms. Dobie are predictable for many of us who have been interacting with the city council and staff over the past few years, but the sheer scale of the distrust and the abusive behavior is staggering and was new information for a lot of us. Over the past few years, I have seen firsthand many abusive and demeaning behaviors by past mayor Darcy Paul, Commissioner Ray Wang, council members Chow and Moore, targeted to staff as well as residents. I've been on the receiving end of demeaning and abusive comments by these same people. Liang once put up a PowerPoint slide during council meeting, calling me selfish and greedy. Darcy Paul once looked me straight in the eye and said he was glad he would never have to see me or talk to me ever again. These are not emotionally mature and constructive behaviors that we would expect from our public officials. It's ironic to hear Darcy now calling for collegiality and respect when he himself seems incapable of doing it. When staff and residents are feeling devalued, demoralized, demeaned, and frustrated, something has to change. I'm disappointed at all the residents here today who are excusing these behaviors as if the ends justify the means. Consequences are good. They encourage accountability and responsibility in our council members. I therefore encourage the council to identify and implement appropriate and fair consequences so that we can strengthen our city governance and improve the city staff's morale and retention. Thank you for everything you do for the city, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sima. Next we have Deborah Timmers, followed by Rod Sinks, followed by Luis Sadadi. Welcome, Deborah.
Hi, I'm Debbie Timmers, and I would like to add my voice to consider the recommendations in the report. I know it is very embarrassing to have your behavior shared publicly. I have experienced that as well, albeit in a different setting, but let me tell how it went for me. Early in my career, I wasn't as respectful as I should have been to the support staff that worked for our team. I didn't even realize what I was doing and found out very publicly in one of our department meetings. It was very embarrassing. I have to say, in the following weeks, my responses went through all of the Elizabeth Koubler-Ross's stages of grief. First was denial. I didn't really act that way, they're making it up. To anger, who told on me? This is so biased and unfair. To bargaining, which happened when my boss recommended a behavioral plan, and my response was, listen, I'll try to be better. You make it too much about this. Then to depression, this is so embarrassing, I just want to hide. And finally, to acceptance, you know, I chose the wrong behavior once, and now I have a chance every day to choose better. Going through that behavioral plan was painful, but it helped move me through those stages quickly, and in doing so, I became more respected, not just with staff, but with others all along the hierarchy. And I think it's because they saw me go through the hard work of improving my behavior. Nobody's perfect. I encourage all of us to welcome and not run away from constructive criticism to give you a chance to become more effective in what you do in your job. You may actually become a model that others will want to emulate in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next we have Rod Sinks, followed by Luis Sadadi, followed by Ar Wang. Welcome, Rod. And Rod, you'll need to unmute.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Rod Sinks. I served as council member from 2011 through 2020. I was not surprised by the findings of the grand jury report, but frankly, it only scratched the surface. I have plenty more stories that I figured I might well be telling someday as a contemporaneous witness during discovery under a lawsuit against our city, and I hope this council takes action tonight to help avoid that possibility. You know, this is not about politics. Please note that the grand jury report was released after the election, no doubt to avoid influencing it. As for our city staff, when the council majority changed at the end of 2018, I witnessed a rapid shift by staff to accommodate the majority's new priorities and policies. And that is exactly what responsible local government staff does in a democracy. They work to implement those priorities and policies. For example, within months, staff worked to queue up repeal of the negotiated plan for VAALCO. The city used its full authority it could to slow down progress on the SB 35 project. Dozens of important items were brought and queued up by staff for council action, which my colleagues supported. And when I voted no, I made a short statement without throwing a wrench in the work, again and again, as I've seen with this council. Now, staff has been doing its professional job as councils come and go, and now it is time for this council to take action, to ensure that all council members do theirs as policymakers, rather than making constant attempts to obstruct the work of the city and interfere with our staff's execution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Next we have Luis Sadadi, followed by Ar Wang, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Luis.
My name is Luis Sadadi, and I'm a resident of Cupertino for 37 years. Good governance, transparency, and legal behavior are the key goals here. Kitty Moore has removed herself from being questioned and answering questions regarding her behavior. She has repeatedly stated she was not given an opportunity to address the concerns brought by the grand jury, yet now and last council meeting, she refused to be part of the process and did not even want the report made public. This lack of transparency and unwillingness to answer to the public at large is very, very disturbing. On the other hand, she says her job is to ask questions. She has asked questions in a very destructive and destructive manner to the city staff in a boss-to-subject manner, but she is not herself willing to be asked questions. There are democratic norms, institutions, and laws that prescribe what a council member and mayor may and may not do. Continuing to not follow the procedures and laws, not being willing to participate in the fact-finding and consequence process is very, very damning. She was elected council member. She was not elected queen. The city staff are professionals, they are not peasants. Cupertino is a democratic city, it is not a fiefdom. The city staff have had to dedicate 30% or more of their time addressing these unceasing, increasingly, and relentless politically motivated questions. 60% of senior management have left. Can any of you, residents included, perform your job with 20 emails a day being directed at you in an accusatory manner that you are required to address and get the same questions the next day? There are ground rules that two council members and one ex-mayor has not followed. Self-serving excuses for illegal and disruptive behavior outside of our legal government structure are no defense for this continued illegal and disruptive behavior.
Thank you, Luis. That is your time. Next we have Ar Wang, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Gari Chala. Welcome, Ar.
Hello, thank you. Good evening, city council, fellow residents. I was your former two-time chair of the planning commission. Let me first apologize in advance for my East Coast tendencies of being direct. I don't believe in passive-aggressive. I do believe in a conciliatory approach, but sometimes you have to be direct to make your point. The only issue these council members and former council, city council members are accused of is asking questions which have been obfuscated by the staff. Residents elected a council that would be accountable to them. Or were the question is to ask residents about the lack of accountability to us? Linda Dobie is taking the city staff's side, not the residents', and we paid for her to represent the city, not the residents. The residents of Cupertino have sought transparency, accountability, and competence from the city staff. Our this-majority city council continues to obfuscate, shirk responsibility, and reward incompetence. This is not good governance at all. Time and time again, residents-focused city council members have shown that the quality of work provided by the staff is inadequate. And I'm not saying all staff, there are great staff there, but when there is incompetence, our city attorney is incentivized to hide the issues, not take responsibility. We had incompetent hiring of a consultant for our housing element? We had incompetent work on VAALCO giving developers the upper hand approval to build on what was a toxic site? We had incompetent processes that finally showed embezzlement? We had incompetent staff that did not foresee the budget crisis? We had incompetent staff that punted on the 5G tower issue? This is why we are outraged by the council's behavior. This is why council members have had to do three times the work they are supposed to do and cannot trust nor rely on staff to provide useful input. Interviewing 16 staff members about being accountable when they are the problem is not substantial evidence. The lack of accountability to residents is the issue. Interferes with the priority of a department, takes too much time. Yes, it takes time when you're reporting to residents. Yes, it takes time when you have to find the answers. Ms. Dobie failed to seek the point of view from the other side. We have a lack of due process, that's the issue, but we do need to work together, as Darcy Paul mentioned. But the residents need competent staff. We have no idea who made the accusations in this report, who were interviewed. Only 16 people were interviewed, all staff, no residents. We ultimately work for the residents, and when we forget that, we end up with the incompetence of this majority city council still on a witch hunt and not focused on the issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ar. Next we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Gari Chala, followed by John Geis. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening. When reading the multiple reports, it is clear to me that training is needed. Staff needs clear guidelines and tools on how to deal with what they perceive is too many questions. City manager needs to not cut off requests but come back to council to ask for guidance as Municipal Code 2.17.043 dictates. Staff needs to inform council members via the city manager if there is a problem. All these issues require training. Please provide training for everyone and not just one brief meeting. Ask questions. Asking questions does not mean you're disrespecting or intend to change recommendations or workload. If perceived that way, the person should speak up immediately. There are two municipal codes directly related to information requests. 2.17.020B ensures council members have free access to the flow of any information relative to the operation of the city and ensuring that such information is communicated by staff in full and with candor. 2.17.043, information, as well, the city council as a whole have complete freedom to access to any information requested of staff and will receive the full cooperation and candor of city staff. We elected city council members Chow and Moore because they are detail-oriented, and they ask questions on behalf of residents. Through questions and answers, we all get a better understanding and often an improved outcome. Provide training to all, and as Ms. Dobie recommends, develop policies and procedures to satisfy the need for information by council members, realizing we also need to move on. The city council has serious issues to address that take all of you working together to solve. Don't make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next we have Gari Chala, followed by John Geis, followed by our final speaker, Adam. Welcome, Gari.
One quick point of order, Madam City Clerk. I noted that there are two Gari Chalas who are listed here. Sometimes that is an artifact of somebody giving somebody a link.
Yes, I will only allow her to speak once.
If she's in fact Gari Chala. If she's in fact Gari Chala.
This is Ava Chow. I'm sorry I used someone Gari's link.
Oh, I see.
Is that a... Yes.
So I believe that would be fine because both hands were raised within the time limit. So please go ahead, make your comments.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ava Chow. I am Cupertino Union's school trustee. I'm speaking on my own behalf as a resident of Cupertino. My day job is a high school teacher. Good evening, Mayor Way and Vice Mayor Mohan. I want to kind of address the issue of someone's comment about union members. I am a union member. If I have a grievance, any mistreatments from my supervisors, I report them. However, if I was to get maltreated or yelled at and disrespected in a way by my school board members, in which I am a teacher of, the accountability is different. I can't go up the union chain because these are public members elected, similar to city council members. So the way of accountability will probably be censure, recall, or the options by the grand jury report, censure, refer to the district attorney, refer to grand jury, and/or remove council member from committees. So it's really hard when you're in a work environment, especially if you're the city manager, like a superintendent. You are hired and fired by the city council as a city manager. So if you're being berated by someone who has the ability to hire and fire you, that makes it really hard for you as a job. That's additional hostile work environment that is not needed. So as a teacher, I think we need to look at, it's not only what you are saying, but how do you speak? What is your tone? We need to be good examples of good governance. We need to be able to be adults and self-regulate and learn from our mistakes. And if we don't, we need to have, take a responsibility. And I ask that our council consider the recommendations of the grand jury, to censure, to refer to the district attorney, to refer to grand jury, and/or remove council member from committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ava. Next, we have John Geis, followed by our final speaker, Gari Chala. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor Way and council members. I am a longtime resident of Cupertino, and I urge the council to implement all of the fact-finding recommendations. There is a clear need for accountability. The fact-finding report left me deeply concerned. The disrespectful behavior cited in the report should not be happening in our city. This was not civil discourse on multiple occasions. It cannot be ignored. I don't feel the council can simply move forward with no consequences or review. I encourage the council to continue embracing good governance and implementing the report's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our final speaker is Gari Chala. Welcome, Gari.
Good evening, council. I want to highlight that these are not new violations, so the recommendations made in the report are more than warranted and should be embraced by the council. As for the discussions about it's fine to ask questions, I do agree it is fine to ask questions and request information, but you should not, you know, interpretations of a few individuals should not stop all staff decisions. You're blocking basic governmental functions, and when you do that, it means our council can't function as it should be. Regardless of individual's belief, the law is that communication goes to the city manager, and this is on purpose so that politics is removed from city government and communication is done in the best way possible. That means that there's emails or communications on the side are not allowed, meaning, and also, no organization in any sector can function if their members are constantly questioning their peers' decision-making. Like I said earlier, we have to highlight government function, and while questioning is good, it should be done correctly through the city manager, and it should not be done over and over and over. If you have a member who is continuing to display bad behavior, working together does not mean enabling this behavior. It means highlighting it and punishing it as necessary. And like this report has found, there are actions that are necessary and should be embraced by the council, as Connie stated. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Gari. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank all the speakers. We're here because we all care. So thank you very much for speaking up, and I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Or, oh, I'm sorry.
We can do this after recess. I just, there's one issue that came up in public comment that I think it might be worth spending a few minutes to clarify.
Okay, so let's, I think let's do it right now before the recess.
You know, so there were a number of speakers that raised the issue of, you know, council members asking questions, and that's, it's certainly fair for council members to ask questions, and they need to be fully informed to do their job. So there's no question that that's a problem. The issue here that arises, and the reason why we're here today, there's two. One is primarily legal. The city manager takes direction from the full council, acting as a majority, acting in a public meeting like this one. So when you have individual council members, either through volume or tone or other means, you know, attempting to direct or influence staff members, either that make their decisions or the time, the priorities they spend, that they spend, you know, that undermines the council management reform of government, and it asserts the ability of the full council to take responsibility for the decisions it makes. The second issue is less legal, but more one of the effective administration of the city. It's, you know, the conduct that's identified in the report, and the conclusions in the report reflect this fact, is it makes it extraordinarily difficult for the city to retain and recruit effective, competent staff that want to work in an environment where their professional judgment will be trusted and the work that they perform will be meaningful. And that goes to issues that are not so much legal, again, but are more issues of mistrust, tone, as well as pure volume. And so I do appreciate the comments from the public that, you know, and we certainly don't mean to suggest that council members shouldn't be asking questions and hard questions. But this goes beyond that, and it really addresses these issues. And, you know, the reason that we're here is because those go to the core function of the city.
Thank you, City Attorney, for the clarification. So now it's almost 8 o'clock, so I'd like to take a recess. Could we start at 6:00? Shall we do a five-minute or 10-minute recess? Five minutes is good? Okay, we're taking a five-minute recess. Thank you. Because of Councilmember Chow is late and she missed the opportunity to ask questions, I'd like to provide you with the opportunity to ask questions of, you know, Ms. Dobbs or our secure attorney.
Okay.
Yeah. Please.
So, thank you for the opportunity. But first, I just learned that the statement I sent to the city manager and the city clerk to be read in the beginning of the meeting, right after roll call, wasn't read. So I'm reading that right now. My company has an important internal event today, which requires all hands on deck. As the mayor and the city manager are aware, before the legal deadline to post the agenda, I had requested a start time of 6:45 PM as any regular city council meeting, but this request was denied. I will join tonight's meeting as soon as I'm able, which will likely be at 6:45 PM. I respectfully request that no substantive action be taken until I'm present. So I would just put that into the record. And then as for questions, let me share my screen here. So this so-called neutral report mentioned some important municipal code by number, but never quoted them. And I would like to enter them into the meeting record and then get, this is my question. I'll come to my question. So this is, as shown here, is important and critical, relevant Cupertino municipal code regarding information request for city council. Municipal Code 2.17.020, ensuring that city council members have free access to the flow of information, oh, sorry, relative to the operation of the city. And the other section, 2.17.034, individual city council members, as well as the city council as a whole, have complete freedom of access to any information requested of staff. The same section states, "The city staff will make every effort to respond in a timely and professional manner to all requests made by individual council members for information assistance." In the judgment of the city manager, that if it will require more workload, it will then be assigned to staff through the collective direction of the city council. Nowhere in the municipal code give the main city manager any authority to determine what information the city council can have or not have. So my question to Ms. Dobbs would be, how come this critical, important municipal code were not quoted in the so-called neutral report?
I'll start that question, and Ms. Dobbs can finish the answer and answer the question more directly. So I'd just like to point out that the council member statement is incorrect. The municipal code explicitly does give the city manager the discretion to decide when it's appropriate to respond to a request from a single council member, and it sets out a number of criteria that the city manager should consider in responding to that request. So, you know, is the request specific and limited in scope so that staff can respond without altering other priorities and with only minimal delay to other assignments? Is the request a one-time work requirement as opposed to an ongoing work requirement? Or does the response to a request require a significant alteration of staff resources, generally defined as consisting of one or more person or a single time or staff person working on the request in excess of two hours?
This is all in the report, I know. But my question is not, my question is, the report is supposed to be neutral? So this statement you made were included in the report, but the ones I quoted here were not included. A neutral report should include both. So my question is, why is the neutral report did not also include these statements I quoted?
Yeah, I'm just correcting your attempt to distort the municipal code on the record. So if Ms. Dobbs wants to answer that question, she can.
So why are these not included? That's my question.
I think there is reference to the fact that the council has ultimate authority to access information, limited by, and what the city attorney just read, limited by, you know, it goes through the city manager. It specifically lists criteria by which they're going to respond, and basically, those criteria go to, you know, staff priorities, the how much time.
Okay, I think my time is up. My point is, a neutral report should include both sides, not just one side of the municipal code.
I think, I think Councilmember Chow, it does. And with respect to the Brown Act, this is not an issue on Brown Act, as the city attorney said.
So thanks for the five-minute question, because you missed it. So I think it's only fair we provide you with that information. So I have closed the public comment before the recess, and we are going to bring back to council for discussion. So each council also have another five minutes for discussion. Who would like to speak first? Councilmember Chow? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll just continue. So in my slide, I think this report also extremely lacked the point for Cupertino residents, which the city is there to serve. In California Brown Act, the well-known Sunshine Law states, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." And as the organization chart shows, citizens of Cupertino is who we serve, and it's all of our boss. And this report seems to have neglected the role of Cupertino residents who elected us. Next, here's my statement. Citizens, hmm? Excuse me? Oh, so I wasn't sharing the slide. Now I'm just reading my statement, but if you would like to see my statement, here it is. Citizens of Cupertino, city council, city staff, under the Constitution, which I have sworn to protect and support, it is my responsibility as an elected city council member to lead the city. Cupertino voters have elected me to lead and supervise the running of the city. My constitutional duties necessarily include obtaining information about all actions of the city as appropriate in my judgment as elected representative. The highest duty of every council member is to serve the best interest of the residents, not the best interest of power brokers. The highest duty of all city staff is to serve the interests of Cupertino residents, represented by the elected city council members, including providing information as and when requested by a member of the city council. I very much appreciate the hard and dedicated work provided by the city staff, day in, day out, and I trust that they are fully capable in answering questions to support their findings, and I trust that they appreciate public and council inputs and questions in order to arrive at the best policies for our constituents. I will continue to ask questions, analyze the information, and vote on policies based on thorough research, critical to making informed decisions. I have always directed my questions to the city manager and will continue to do so. The political power brokers have tried to influence and muzzle the city council and staff through anonymous, undisclosed interviews. The expectation that council members are here solely to rubber stamp is precisely what is wrong with the government, and that is precisely why I stepped up to serve on Cupertino City Council. I will continue to speak up and serve Cupertino residents. As an immigrant who has seen firsthand how democracy can be hollowed out behind the scenes, I will protect and defend the Constitution of the people, by the people, and for the people, to the best of my abilities. Democracy is a privilege that I have sworn an oath as an elected official to stand up for and to protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. We have, do we have comments from other council members? So this is for council discussion and comments. We each have five minutes to, you know, speak up after we heard the staff presentation and heard the input from the public. Okay, Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Thank you, Mayor Way. This fact-finding report, prepared by the independent investigator, in my opinion, serves many purposes. It validates the findings of the It validates the findings of the grand jury report, which by the way was not instigated by the city council. The grand jury report was released, uh, before we took office. It, it does, um, like I said, it validates the findings of the grand jury report. It identifies the problem that the city has been experiencing, uh, with the harmful behavior of certain council members and the impact on staff who have had to work under such hostile conditions. But importantly, the report also lays out a framework, uh, to improve council-staff relations going forward so that we, that is, staff, council and the public can all have a cohesive approach to, uh, dealing with city issues. Many of the incidents pointed out in both the grand jury report and the independent investigator's report happened over the past few years. There is not much we can do about what has already happened, except learn and pledge that this never happens again. It is much, much more than just asking questions of staff. We also, as a council, can take actions now to make things better. This report lays out seven recommendations. All these are basic, common sense recommendations. None of these should be subject to interpretation or reinterpretation or attributed to imaginary political conspiracies. At this time, when we are facing an unprecedented fiscal crisis, when we have just a few months left to refine the housing element draft, when we have sales tax issues that can affect us for years to come, it makes no sense whatever, whatsoever, to dig our heels in the sand, refuse to acknowledge failings, not make even the slightest modifications in behavior, point fingers at some mythical political operatives and pretend that this behavior has not harmed our city. Like I said, the recommend, the report lists seven recommendations. Uh, we should accept these seven recommendations. It also lists remedies and consequences, specifically censure, referral to the district attorney and referral to the grand jury. These are all severe actions. For now, I don't want to go there. We have some significant challenges, as I mentioned, on our hands and I want all of us to be able to focus on these. This is our collective responsibility. Uh, if, uh, the only other thought I had was maybe in about six months, I would like this item to be brought back to the council to evaluate the progress if any, and we can have a further discussion on, uh, how, uh, or if, uh, anything has changed for the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. I, I'd like to, I don't have a prepared speech. I was going to just go with the flow and see how our council members reflect and, um, you know, ask themselves, but I am very disappointed. We have Councilmember Moore, who didn't even stay to listen and to question, to defend her own rights if that's her intention. We have Councilmember Chow, who made a statement and left. I'd like to ask our residents, is that the council members are those council members' intention? Are they really want, do they really want to work together? I've been asked to work together. And when I was elected mayor, that was my intention, we worked together. But we work together as law-abiding council members. We have our municipal codes to follow. Councilmember Chow says she's here to defend democracy. We have sworn to abide by the law of our federal law, state law, our own municipal codes. We are lawful citizens and you want your council members to follow the law? And yes, we make policies, we make ordinances, but we are law-abiding and we cannot deviate, we're not elected to be, to do whatever we want. I am very disappointed. How can we work together when we have two council members in question and we're sincerely don't want, like Vice Mayor Mohan said, we don't want to go there. We want to work together. I am very puzzled. How can we work together when they're not even here to listen, to say, and yes, to defend themselves? And I heard multiple accusations in the public comments and in our council members' talk, distrust of a professional who's done this as her life's work and credibility, distrust our staff, saying that our staff is incompetent. I would love not to have to go this, we have work to do. Yes, like Vice Mo, Mayor Mohan says, we have, our budget is coming up, our, um, housing element is coming up, we have work to do. How are we going to work together with our council members not even here to stay and listen and reflect? It's not about, yes, I did a great job, I have the right to ask questions, of course. And nobody here is rubber stamping anything. We ask questions in courtesy, in, yes, we want, we, and we are entitled to the answers from our, um, staff. But when those, as so clearly stated in the fact reports, interfering with our staff's working and also the, the hiring and retaining of our staff, th- this is not something we need to take lightly. I sincerely hope that we can work together and we've been multiple causes, work together, work together. Is this how we're going to work together? We have two vacancies right here. I'd like to ask our residents, how are we going to work together? If we're not sincerely here saying, yes, let's reflect and let's not, this, we're not here to incriminate anybody. We want to training, yes, absolutely. Uh, the recommendation include training, include work with the city manager of how we're going to resolve this multiple emails, how can we get information to the satisfactory, satisfactory of council members who want more information? So, um, I, I, I really want to work together. As for one of the comments says that, see, the attorneys work for the clients. I hope any attorney in this room, including Councilmember Froom, have integrity and have sworn by their profession that they are going to do a professional job. They don't just work for a client to say what a client wants them to do. And I, I certainly hope that's not what our attorneys are doing. So working together, yes, let's, let's try to work together and, um, let's find a way to work together. I, I really would like that to happen. So I'm gonna leave it like that.
So to pick up on what the mayor was commenting about with respect to who the attorney's client is, um, Ms. Dobbie, if you wouldn't mind describing who you think your client is, I would appreciate that for the sake of the public.
I think, uh, and, and I listened to the comment and to some extent, yes, attorneys have an obligation, you know, to represent their clients and so forth. This is an assignment on fact-finding. My obligation to you as the client is to collect facts and to make sure that they're based on truth. Um, it's not a matter of, you know, I don't take these assignments on because I think that, you know, I'll, I'll get more and more work. That's, that's not what I do. And as a matter of fact, I've been fired, you know, because obviously my report, not with the council, but other kinds of reports, they didn't like what I had to say. Okay, but my job as an independent fact-finder is to give you unbiased facts. Um, it's out of my wheelhouse what you do with them. I made some recommendations, but my, that, that's my obligation to you and to do that to the best of my ability. I'm not in court, I'm not, you know, advocating a position, I'm not, that's not what I was hired to do. I'm a fact-finder.
If I might as well, you mentioned in the report in the passive that you were retained. Is it fair to say that you were retained by the city attorney's office?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and Mr. City Attorney, is it fair to say that your client is the city as a municipal entity?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. My, um, my ethical obligation is to act in the best interest of the city, subject to the general direction of the city council.
Very good. So Ms. Dobbie, going back to your role as a fact-finder, if in the course of your fact-finding, you had discovered that instead the civil grand jury report was completely wrong, totally unsubstantiated, and city staff are to blame for everything and we have a serious problem on our hands, what would you have done with that information?
I would have told you, um, you know, and this is not my first grand jury report, by the way. It's been a while, but, uh, yes, I would have told you because if, if you're going to address concerns and issues and so forth, you've got to have the facts. It's like Joe Friday on Dragnet, long time, just the facts, ma'am, just the facts. And so that's, yes, and, and I've done that before. And, and I've, uh, found reports that have been done, for example, by grand juries or of, I, I do a lot of work sometimes with police, independent reviewers, and they'll give me a report and, you know, it's, no, it's, my job is to find the facts, take it, leave it. Your job is then as the body, uh, the, uh, agency is to decide how you want to proceed with that.
Very good, thank you. I share my, my colleagues' views in general. I want to make sure, and it was originally my purpose, in adding to our response to the civil grand jury, the motion that we investigate this matter and come back so that we can enact new policy to be able to correct problems, make ourselves better. Part of that is necessarily a degree of accountability. So I hope that when I make a motion here tonight, that my colleagues will also recognize that there are certain things in this report that we cannot immediately remedy simply by enacting a new policy direction. Some of that policy has to be a form of, I hate to use the term censure, that's not what I'm asking for tonight, but I do think that there need to be appropriate repercussions, that there should be consequences for actions that cannot be undone at this point and that have caused a serious damage. That is all I want to say at this point. I'm happy to offer a motion if you would like to have me make one.
I think I have about a minute and a half to speak up. I think one of the residents, or maybe a few residents says, let's work together face to face. And where are we here, face to face? We're not facing anything. Yes, let's go out, have coffee and, and face to face and chat. I would love to do that. I, I'd like to ask city manager, do you find Councilmember Chow, Councilmember Moore willing to talk to you?
Um, Mayor Way, um, so I have my regular, uh, one-on-ones with Councilmember Chow. Um, I have not had the privilege of meeting with Councilmember Moore since February. I've asked a Councilmember Moore, um, to meet up for coffee. Um, Chris and I both have, and we had maybe 10 minutes or so, and that was to, to the extent. I have yet to ask Councilmember Chow out for coffee.
So, you know, we're willing to do that, face to face, make decisions together and face it together, work together. We're not facing each other right now and I, I find it difficult to work together when we're not here together. So I've been asked multiple times, Mayor Way, work together. I really would love to do that. So, um, at this moment, I feel that there is no respect for the residents, for the professionals, for us to have two council members left. Respect is, is the base of mutual understanding and work together. When there is no respect, I, I, I would really like to work together. So I was going to give a couple more minutes for each council member to speak up more. Let's, how do we move forward? We have two council members that are not here. So I would let, ask the council members here, what's the next step? How do we move forward?
When I spoke a few minutes ago, I talked about the seven recommendations that Ms. Dobbie had listed in the report. And I thought one of the ways we could move forward was, I mean, these are not complicated recommendations, but they are, they do speak to the fact that a certain amount of respect and courtesy and, um, you know, just good behavior are essential. So my thought would be that maybe we, um, that would be a starting point to adhere to the seven, uh, recommendations listed in the report. And somehow find, uh, you know, uh, track it for, for a few months and then come back. I know that the policies and procedures manual, correct me if I'm wrong, as a city manager, I think it's up for review in October.
To the mayor, I believe is probably in September.
In September. So I, I would suggest that we come back with this item as well in September to see if there's been any change for the better.
Maybe another question I have in my mind and I want to express it is, I hear doubt from both council members and public, um, is this unbiased? An accusation even says you only work for the clients because you're getting paid or something like that. What would take, what would it take? Who would we trust that for further evaluation, investigation, that all of us would trust? I, I ask myself, what else can we do to, to fact-finding, to make sure these are facts? I, I am, I'm, I'm okay with, we have different opinions, I'm okay with asking questions. That what we should do, yes. And, but to repeatedly listen to our city attorney's interpretation and our professionals' interpretation and refuse to take up and think, maybe there's a better way to communicate, maybe there's a better way to govern, still as effective as it can be. I think that's what we need to strive to do. How can we govern together, working with our city staff? And I keep on saying staff because they do have expertise. We do want their honest recommendations. Yes, we do our own research, we ask with questions, we listen to residents' input, and the staff repeatedly told us, they're not offended if we don't listen to them. But this is their best recommendation according to the job they can do best. And I think our staff is not offended if we don't, we say, hey, you know, according to my own research, I disagree with you. But to demean staff, saying that you're not professional, you don't do a good job, you're not competent, that's only, that only stops from staff giving us their best effort, right? Especially during crisis like we're facing right now. We want our staff to give us out-of-box innovative thinking. So how can we move together to, to do this? We really need to work on this. So I am willing to entertain a motion to see how we can move forward.
And for the sake of making this simple, I have forwarded to the city clerk a motion that I am prepared to offer at this time, that I think addresses different parts of what we are trying to do here. Part of it is attempting to make sure that council members are able to get information, that the public is able to fully appreciate what has transpired here, um, finding a means for ensuring compliance, not just to be punitive for its own sake. That's not really the goal. The goal here is to ensure that we have a better functioning city. Um, and then also to enact some degree of consequence for acts that are completed in the past and that we have no other means of avoiding the moral hazard for. I think all of those are important and I will read the, uh, motion as I have written it. If you could put it up on the screen, Madam City Clerk. So I move that council adopt the seven staff recommendations in addition to the following. First, to aid the desire of council members for information, that council members receive training from the city clerk's office on the use of the city's digital archive system. Two, for the sake of transparency and accountability, that all privileges and protections from disclosure, except for the attorney-client privilege and the attorney-work-product doctrine, be waived as to communications between the city manager and council members, current or former, constituting any part of the subject matter of the fact-finding report or otherwise relevant thereto. and that such documents be disclosed and posted in a publicly accessible location on the city's website, provided, however, that no confidential personnel information otherwise protected from disclosure shall be released. Three, that the city attorney's office continue to monitor compliance of council members with the municipal code with respect to the council-staff relationship, and to report back to council in four to five months with a progress report. Four, in the event that such progress report includes substantial evidence of continued violations of the municipal code with respect to the council-staff relationship, through the end of such reporting period, that staff return to council at the same meeting with a relevant censure most resolution containing appropriate findings of fact, up to and including referral to the district attorney's office. Five, that council members Moore and Chow be removed immediately from their respective committee assignments. Six, that the city attorney's office be directed to make a limited-scope referral to the district attorney's office with respect to the fact-finding report's evidence of any current or former council member's interference in the hiring and firing decisions that are the province of the city manager.
I, I think I ought to entertain a second, then I have questions on some of the, in addition. Is, is that okay? Okay, so I would entertain a second, then we can start to discuss and ask questions. And I'll second it. So, Councilmember Fruen, I have a couple of questions. Two specific question is, what do you mean by council member Moore and Chow being removed from respective committee assignments?
So, we all have committee assignments where we represent the city elsewhere. For example, um, I represent the city on the VTA Policy Advisory Committee, right? With respect to the various committees to which council members Moore and Chow are assigned, I think it is an appropriate sanction at this stage to remove them from those committees.
Can we have the, uh, can we have the backup, please? So, so my concern is, that leaves only the three of us to do all the committee assignments, and that, those are quite many committee assignments.
I, I am perfectly open to reopening them to both council members if and when the behavior is corrected.
Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan, do you have any, uh, questions?
Yes, I have some hesitation in approving number five. I thought that maybe we could come, since we, we're talking about coming back a few months from now to, to review the, to evaluate the behavior, we could implement number five at that time.
So, I can, I can understand the hesitation, because no one wants to take an adverse action against colleagues. That said, you know, we've witnessed absolutely no commitment to doing any better. And I fear that if there is no consequence that anyone wants to give any heed to, that it won't be taken seriously. Does it mean more work for the rest of us? Yes, but we signed up for work.
My second question is to the city attorney. Um, it says the city attorney's office continue to monitor compliance of council members. Do, do you, do you have a procedure to monitor, or is that an assignment, assignment that you think you can perform?
To a certain extent, that comes naturally in the role, to the extent that the, that the communications involve other people, that may involve additional resources, but it's certainly feasible to do. And of course, part of the city attorney's jo-, office job is to monitor compliance with the municipal code in general.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is about number six. What do you mean by, um, make a limited-scope referral to the district attorney's office?
In other words, the referral would involve only the evidence of any current or former council member's interference in the hiring and firing decisions that are the province of the city manager. There are a number of other things that are described in the report that are potentially the subject of referral to the district attorney, because they would constitute a form of council manic interference that is punishable, potentially as a misdemeanor under the, the municipal code. This is specific and in a class of its own, um, and it is directed largely at accomplished facts in the past, and I think it creates significant moral hazard if we don't do something about it. And so I think it is appropriate to limit the scope of the referral to that one thing.
So, limited means just to that one point?
Yes.
Okay. So, may I ask the city attorney, is that if this action is to be implemented, would you be the one who make the referrals to the, uh, Attorney General's Office, or how, what's the procedure?
So, if, if directed by council, I would provide them notice of this, this, this direction from council and as, along with the, the appropriate findings in the, uh, the Dobby report.
Okay, thank you. So, when I read number one, I think it coincides with number seven in the recommendations. Explore ways to resolve council member needs for information, given limited staff resources. So, that couples with this training may be able to satisfy our council member's desire for information. So, that's number one, I think I, I really like that. Um, for the sake of transparency, accountability, that all privileged and protection from disco- that, that means, it is a long sentence for me to read. So, does that essentially mean, um, we would put council members' emails with city managers as long as on the website, be transparent, as long as it doesn't involve personnel issues or, uh, attorney-client privilege?
That's essentially correct.
And how often do we do it?
It is with respect to this investigation.
Sorry, can you explain it?
Yes, so if you read the following lines, be waived as to communications between the city manager and council members, current or former, constituting any part of the subject matter of the fact-finding report.
So, who is gonna do it? The staff is gonna do it, or how do we implement that?
I, I would presume that the, um, city attorney would examine the documents for privilege, and that at some point, the city clerk would post them on the website in an appropriate place.
Yeah, um, yeah, so I'll ta-, I'll also take this opportunity to clarify the rec-, for the record, that, you know, the waiver of other protections would not be ongoing, but solely, um, limited to the, the scope of evidence that was considered in the context of this report. Um, that review would be, um, conducted primarily by the city's, city attorney's office, um, you know, and, and I'd have to, uh, figure out how to get support to, to, to conduct it. Um, it could certainly be done. It's somewhat time-consuming, because of course, those documents have to be reviewed for privilege and, and, um, and, uh, personnel confidentiality.
Okay, so, it looks like this is work for the city attorney's office.
That's correct.
And you are okay to perform it?
I, uh, if, if, if council directs the city attorney's office to perform it, uh, the city attorney's office will perform it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so number three, the city attorney's office continue to, um, monitor, you know, so it looks like that's your job again, city, um, city attorney's office.
That's correct.
Okay. And number four, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, so, you know, it does a lot of good for us to continue to monitor. It doesn't do us a whole lot of good if we don't find out what the res-, the results of that monitoring have been. So, this part of the motion would require the city attorneys, uh, and the rest of staff to come back to us with a report on what has happened. Has the behavior improved? Perhaps today, what you saw was a show, and in their heart of hearts, our colleagues will commit to change. I don't know. This gives them a chance before we proceed with anything more punitive.
And does it stay the timeframe?
Yes, it's a four-to, to five-month period. That puts it essentially where, um, Vice Mayor Mohan wanted it to be, somewhere in September, October.
Okay, so I think I have most of my questions answered. Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan, you have questions?
Yeah, and, and this is to the city attorney, or, or council member Fruen. Uh, number six, you, you may have explained it to me, but, uh, or you may have explained it today, but I'm not sure what, uh, this is. What, what would you refer to the district attorney's office?
Councilmember Fruen, please go ahead. Sure. So, you would be referring the evidence that has been collected in the report to the district attorney's office with respect to, um, council members, current or former, who have interfered in the hiring and firing decisions that are specifically and uniquely the province of the city manager.
So, so that is with reference to, um, the former mayor?
It, it could be pursuant to the report.
Okay, so, um, just want to, uh, further clarification, Councilmember Fruen. So, the cit-, uh, it says the city attorney's office be directed to make a limited-scope referral to the district attorney's office with respect to the fact-finding report's evidence of current or former council members' interference in the hiring and firing decisions. So, it would be limited to the hiring and firing decisions?
Absolutely.
And as, as far as we know, that has not, uh, affected the, the current council members?
I, I do not know. I, I only know what the report has shown us thus far, because we obviously haven't seen the underlying evidence. So, I would prefer to give, um, you know, the district attorney the latitude to examine what is there based upon the evidence, because of the nature of the interference.
So, does that mean that the district attorney's office will conduct another investigation?
I'm not sure quite what you mean, I don't think that the-
What is the, the underlying issues that you, that you mentioned? We, um, the city attorney will take Ms. Dobby's report-
Mm-hmm.
-and turn it into the district attorney's office?
Basically. With a referral from us saying, can you please look at this and investigate?
Uh, investigate only, sorry-
Only this thing.
Only in the hiring and firing decisions?
Yeah, that's all we're asking for.
Not anything else?
That's all we're asking for.
As laid out in the report?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second. So, your number five, can we add something to it? Can we, I made, um-
Sure, what would you like to add?
The council members Moore and Chow be removed immediately from the respective committee assignment with intent, with, with intention if in six, five months' report, uh, there's progress, we restore it?
That's fine.
That, I, I don't know if my language is-
I have no problem with that. I think that we would have the, the power to reorganize all of the committee assignments anyway. But, yes, I'm perfectly fine with that.
So, is that, because I, I, I see all the rest is more, um, what we're gonna move into the future. I can see this number five is more of a punitive, uh-
It's a consequence.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to make that friendly amendment.
I would be happy to accept that friendly amendment.
So, we have, um, motion and a second. Um, do we have any more discussions, Vice Mayor Mohan?
No, I think you've, uh, I had concerns about number five. You've answered my question, so I'm, I'm good with the rest of the motion.
Okay, so, um, shall we vote by-
Sure.
Light or voice?
Mayor, and I'm very sorry, but I missed, um, there was some disruption in the back. I missed what your friendly amendment was.
Yeah, the friendly amendment is that council member Moore and Chow will be removed immediately from their respective committee assignments upon five months or six months?
Should we say will be removed?
In, in the event that the progress has been made, we would decide to restore it. Uh, that's, that's what I would like to do.
Yes, so at the time that we receive back the progress report, if sufficient progress has been made, then, um, council would restore.
Is that clear enough?
Those appointments.
Thank you.
Uh, excuse me. I'm, I'm not clear. Are we restoring it? Are we removing the committee assignments now and restoring it later, or are removing it later?
Removing now and restoring later, that's what the friendly amendment is.
Yeah, that, that was my friendly amendment. I, I'd like to see some progress. I, I'm hoping that we can see progress, that we can work together on the same premise of we behave, you know, according to law, and we have our right to ask questions, and resolve all these question, um, the needs for information, work with the city attorney, uh, so, uh, city manager's office to really, um, work on the, the base of we're on the same platform.
One thing I would share with you, Vice Mayor Mohan, on this topic, is that, you know, if this activity is happening here, I think it's reasonable to expect that it is happening also at those bodies. And I would direct your attention to, you know, the, the results of a settlement at the Cities Association of Santa Clara between, um, uh, that agency and, um, its executive director, which involved eight hun-, eight thousand dollars that we had to pay as a city on account of Liang Chow's behavior there. Which involved at least allegedly harassment of the executive director. So, I, I think there's already existing evidence that that is the case elsewhere. And so this feels like an appropriate remedy to that, where it is not occurring here in Cupertino, but where they're representing us elsewhere. And I think that's important.
If, if I presume correctly, I think Vice Mayor Mohan's more like, we've, that not to remove now, but remove it if we don't see progress. Is that how you interpreted, how was friendly moving? Okay. So...
So, I, I, again, I understand the reticence, but there is the option of censure at that point in time as well.
That is true.
Okay, we have, um, motion and a second. You understand that friendly amendment is not what you think, right?
So, are we staying with the, with the, uh-
Okay, so, I'm struggling, because I, I do understand why council member Fruen believed that we need to have some immediate, um, action to show that we're serious about this, and I, I am serious about this, and that we would like to see progress. Is that your intention, right?
Yes, I, I think that this is a case of, of needing to verify compliance first.
I do want to make sure that we are able to join commi-, um, the committees, outside committees are very important. Do we know what are the committees we're talking about? I know it's Valley Water.
Yeah, Valley Water Commission, at least the joint, uh, the, uh, Library Joint Powers Authority.
And also the, uh, Santa Clara County, um, uh, Emergency, uh-
Interoperability Authority.
There's a long name of, of that one. Is that just the three? No, it is more than three.
There may be more.
Through the mayor, um, clerk's office may be able to pull up the list, uh, for your reference.
Can we take a look at it?
Uh, yeah, I just need to stop sharing my screen really quick.
And we do have, um, substitute, uh, or, we're primary and we have, um-
No, you just offered a friendly amendment, and I accepted it.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, when you-
Alternates for-
Yeah, alternate. Uh, uh, I would like to see that, too.
So, uh, let's see. It would be Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Autor-, uh, no, uh, yes. SBRIA. Uh, Santa Clara County Library District Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Chow's-
Alternate with moving if this motion passes?
Santa Clara Valley Water Commission for Councilmember Moore, and Councilmember Chow is the alternate.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Moore is the, uh, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Chow is, uh, is on the School Partnership and School Liaison, uh, Committee. Uh, the Disaster Council. Councilmember Chow is the primary, Councilmember Moore is the alternate. Sister City Committees, uh, Councilmember Moore is the pri- Sister city committees, Councilmember Moore is the primary, along with Vice Mayor. The Community Engagement Plan, CEP Strategic Advisory Committee, is Councilmember Chow and the Vice Mayor, and that is, that's all.
Okay. It looks like there are a lot of things you need to step in, Vice Mayor Mohan. You're alternate for a lot of things.
Yeah, no, that, that doesn't concern me. Some of these meetings are not regular meetings, they, they don't meet that often. So the library, for example, I filled in for Councilmember Chow once, and it was, and it was doable.
So, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussions?
So just to, not to belabor this point, but of all the recommendations, this is the one immediate, uh, consequence. Is that right? Okay.
And if no more discussions, shall we vote by light or vote by voice? By light?
Light's fine if you'd like to, if you feel comfortable.
We can vote by light?
Yes.
Right, okay, so let's vote.
The motion carries with Chow absent and Moore absent due to recusal.
All righty, so, um, I think we have completed this item, and, um, and, and I am going to adjourn the meeting. The meeting is adjourned.